I'd like to bring this meeting to order. We want to welcome everyone tonight. We have with us the Chairman of the RIFA, Mr. Fred Shanks. I want to thank him, one of our high school friends. We also have Mr. Carter here from News Agency. Thank you for attending tonight. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Barber.
Here.
Mr. Blackstock.
President.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
President. If you will, those who will, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. For those who can stand, we would like to say the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. As you join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I would ask, are there any agenda items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to add the following items to tonight's business meeting agenda. Adoption of revised Resolution Number 2019-12-04, supporting for name of North Chatham Bridge to Roy P. Byrd Jr. Memorial Bridge, under consent, Agenda is Item 7E. Also, adoption of Resolution Number 2019-12-06, resolution in support of legislation to improve the process for review of legislation with local physical impact, under consent, Agenda is Item 7I. Adoption of Resolution Number 2019-12-07, resolution in support of increase in sales tax to fund school capital needs, under consent, Agenda Item 7M. Approval of 2020 Legislative Priority List under matters from the work session is Item 14A. Approval of Authorization of Public Hearing on Revisions to Pennsylvania County Code, Chapter 2, Animal and Fowl, under matters from the work session is Item 14B. Approval of Fire and Rescue Commission stipend under matters from the work session is Item 14C. And finally, approval of Silver Creek Potential No-Through Truck Restriction Public Hearing under matters from the work session is Item 14D.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Farmer, second by Mr. Barber. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
That passes unanimously. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Scares, second by Mr. Blackstock. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
That carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Farmer, you've already carried out the resolutions. Now, moving on to Item 8, is that correct, Counselor? Or is it?
We, um, we...
We're on...
We had approval of the consent agenda?
No, that's what we're on now.
We need to approve the consent agenda, then we'll move to resolutions and we'll present all these... The presentation will present these resolutions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the added items.
Thank you. Second by Mr. Farmer. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
And that carries naturally. Moving on to presentations, is that correct, Counselor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The Court of Resolution Presentation, Mr. Blackstock. They all need to come down, all the board members.
Carter, will you come up?
You know how to pose for the cam?
Uh, yeah. Never done it before, yes.
We'd like to thank Dennis Carter, one of our county natives, being here tonight and his commitment to our community and to sports. It's many of us that, when I was younger, I could stay up till 11 o'clock to watch sports. Now, I fall asleep, you wake up to see you, Dennis. And it's not, and I can tell you, I don't see many smiling faces at 11 o'clock around my house anymore either. But we like to, we want to show our appreciation tonight by this resolution from Board Supervisors. Resolution 2019-12-03 honoring Dennis Carter. Whereas at the Business Meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board Supervisors held on Tuesday, December 17th, 2019, in the General District Courtroom of the Edmond R. Shields Courthouse Edition, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas Dennis Carter has been a constant in sports, sporting events throughout the area for nearly four decades. And whereas Dennis Carter announced that he will sign off at ABC 13 for the final time on December 31st, 2019, and begin his retirement. And whereas Dennis Carter began working at WSAT in 1983 after a four-year stint at a Danville radio station, WBTM, where he first broke into communications field, writing 30-second commercials and jump-starting a three-to-four-minute sportscast during evening commute. During that time, Carter also wrote part-time for the Danville Restaurant B and provided occasional stories to WSAT, which did not have a Danville Bureau in the late 70s and early 80s. And whereas Carter became a fixture on the Lynchburg sports scene by regularly working six days a week, following through 80-hour work weeks to get into as many games as possible, all while anchoring the 6:00 PM and 11:00 PM sports segments. Whereas that job took him to the 1999 NCAA Football National Championship Game when Virginia Tech, Tech played Florida State. It also took him to the NCAA Elite Eight this year, where he watched Virginia's men's basketball team win in thrilling fashion before claiming the NCAA national title later in eighth. Finally, it's taken him to local stadiums for countless Friday night football games. Carter has watched high school athletes come and go, some to college and a few professional ranks. And whereas no level of competition has been more important to Carter than high school sports, and he's always found the atmosphere at high school games appealing. And whereas now, after more than forty, a more than forty-year career, Carter hopes to settle down and spend time with his family. And therefore, be it hereby resolved on behalf of the Pennsylvania County Board Supervisors and all the county citizenry, that we express our sincere appreciation to Carter for his outstanding service and dedication to broadcasting sports throughout the county and this region, and wish him the best in his retirement. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Dennis Carter, given unto my hand the 17th day of December, 2019. Jovey Davis, Chairman of the Pennsylvania County Board Supervisors.
Hey, thanks so much.
I would just like to say, thank you for having me here tonight, and thank you for this great honor. Never thought anything like this would happen to me, a shy kid coming out of Danville many, many years ago. But I've been so privileged and fortunate to work in this area in media, radio for four years, television now for 36 and a half. Been so fortunate to be able to live and work in this area. And now, retirement is coming up quickly. I know earlier in the year, it was always, okay, I'm retiring at the end of the year. And then it had to be, okay, I'm retiring at the end of the month. And now, it's within two weeks. So now, it's getting real. It's getting real close now, and I hope I'm ready. But I do know one thing, that I've had a blast and had so many good times along the way. I've met so many great people in this area. I've made lifelong friends, and I just feel very fortunate to have lived and worked in this area for so long. And now, we'll see what retirement holds. But again, thank you for having me here tonight. This honor means so much to me, and I just appreciate it very much. Thank you so much.
On behalf of the entire board and the county as a whole, we're very proud of you. And your commitment, especially to high school sports.
That's my favorite.
And meant so much to many of us, myself personally. I was running a Halt fan, and it's been up and down over the years, but I'd stay up and try to see what that football sport was. The one thing that I always remember about Dennis, they interviewed me earlier, is that smile. He always had a smile on his face, and, you know, in today's world, sometimes it can get a little dreary, especially when you're watching the news. You always had that smile on your face, and we appreciate what you did for us.
I appreciate that.
Good luck in retirement.
Sports is always the good part of the news. You don't have to talk about murders and shootings and all that stuff. It's usually generally good stuff, so that's what's made it so fun for me.
Well, not if you're a real skin fang. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Dennis, I think the media's going to get one photograph, if that's what I...
Okay. You guys get tight. All right, here we go. One, two, three. Got it.
Yeah, thank you.
This is going to Mr. Barber. Resolution of appreciation to Mr. Tim Barber, 2019-12-02. Whereas at the Business Meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board Supervisors held on Tuesday, December 17th, 2019, in the General District Courtroom of Edmond R. Shields Courthouse Edition, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas the Honorable Tim R. Barber has served as the Tonsil District Representative on the Board Supervisors of Pennsylvania County, Virginia for the past 16 years. And whereas Tim R. Barber was first elected to the Board in 2004, for his first term ending on December 2007, and was re-elected for a second four-year term ending on December 31st, 2011, and was re-elected for a third four-year term ending December 31st, 2015, and was re-elected for a fourth four-year term ending December 31st, 2019. And whereas Tim R. Barber tirelessly given his time and effort to improve Pennsylvania County by serving on the following Board Subcommittees. Finance, Solid Waste, Personal, Property and Building, Economic Development, Animal Welfare Facility, Agriculture Development Board, Legislative Fire and Rescue Policies and Procedures Board, Board of Supervisors School Joint Liaison Committee, and the Computer Radio Telecommunications Committee. And whereas, as an appointed Board Representative, Tim R. Barber had also served on the following entities, Danville, Pennsylvania County Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, Local Elected Officials Fire and Rescue Emergency Medical Services Advisory Committee, the Local Emergency Planning Commission, and the Pennsylvania County Service Authority Board. And whereas Tim R. Barber has, by his dedication and leadership faithfully, dutifully served the Board and the citizens of Pennsylvania County, now therefore be hereby resolved on behalf of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors and all the citizens of Pennsylvania County, that we express our sincerest appreciation, Tim R. Barber, for his outstanding service and exemplary leadership that has made him a significant figure in the county's history, and wish him all the best in his future endeavors. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Tim R. Barber, given unto my hand the 17th day of December, 2019, Jovey Davis. And then we also have a plaque presented to Tim R. Barber in recognition of 16 years of outstanding dedication and service to the citizens of Pennsylvania County as the Board of Supervisors Tonsil District Representative, January 2004 through December 2019, Chairman 2011 and 2012, presented by Board Supervisors, Pennsylvania County, Virginia, December 17th, 2019. Congratulations, Mr. Barber.
It's hard, guys, to follow him. It's like following Joey Paulson at that... Anyway, I keep short, but it's been an honor to serve at this level. I want to thank everybody in the county for supporting me all these years and voting for me. I don't have any regrets. I've met people I never thought I'd meet, been places I never thought I'd do. It's been hard sometimes, but it's been a pleasure, and I've enjoyed working with everybody, and I wish you all the best.
Right, thank you. This is Resolution 2019-12-01, Resolution of Appreciative Suit for Mr. Elton W. Blackstock. Whereas at the Business Meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board Supervisors held on Tuesday, December 17th, 2019, in the General District Courtroom of Edmond R. Shields Courthouse Edition, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas the Honorable Elton W. Blackstock was elected to the Board of Supervisors of Pennsylvania County as the Stanton River District Representative, and has been a member of the Board for a total of six years. And whereas Elton W. Blackstock was first elected to the Board of Supervisors at the Stanton River District District Department, and held offices such from November 4th, 2013 through November the 4th, 2014, and was re-elected for a four-year term ending December 31st, 2019. And whereas Elton W. Blackstock has tirelessly given his time and effort to improve Pennsylvania County by serving on the following Board Subcommittees. Finance, Solid Waste, Personnel, Property and Building, Economic Development, Animal Welfare Facility, Agriculture Development Board, Fire and Rescue Policies and Procedures Board, Board of Supervisors School Joint Liaison Committee, and the Computer Radio Telecommunications Committee. And whereas, as an appointed Representative of the Board, Elton W. Blackstock also served on the following other entities, Danville, Pennsylvania County Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, Stanton River Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, Fire and Rescue Emergency Medical Services Advisory Committee, the Local Emergency Planning Commission, and the Pennsylvania County Service Authority Board. And whereas Elton W. Blackstock has, by his dedication and leadership faithfully, dutifully served the Board and the citizens of Pennsylvania County, now therefore be hereby resolved on behalf of the Pennsylvania County Board Supervisors and all the citizens of Pennsylvania County, that we express our sincerest appreciation to Elton W. Blackstock for his outstanding service and exemplary leadership that has made him a significant figure in the county's history, and wish him all the best in his future endeavors. And be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution will be presented to Elton W. Blackstock, given this unto my hand the 17th day of December, 2019, Jovey Davis, Chairman of the Board Supervisors. This plaque to you, Mr. Blackstock, in recognition of six years of outstanding dedication and service to the citizens of Pennsylvania County as the Board of Supervisors, Stanton River District Representative, November 2013 through December 2019, presented by the Board of Supervisors of Pennsylvania County, December 17th, 2019. Congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, Mr. Blackstock?
I'll keep it brief. I want to say, thank you to the citizens of Pennsylvania County for allowing me to serve you. It's been an honor. I retired, as most of everybody up here knows, in 2012, and Mr. Ekin died suddenly, our Board Chairman. And I never thought that, I thought, well, I'll ease into retirement and kind of take it easy and do a little gentleman farming and some fishing. And I ended up throwing my name in the hat to be appointed to the Board at that time by the Board, and never realized how much time and commitment it really takes. And until you serve on one of these boards, you don't know how much time and effort it takes if you do what you're supposed to do. And so, I, it's been an honor to serve the citizens of my district, the citizens of Pennsylvania County, and I hope this time, I'm really going to retire. My wife retired this year. We have four grandchildren, two children, and we like to travel, and I'm thankful that the good Lord has blessed us with good health, except for a cough tonight, but with reasonably good health, and I'm looking forward to spending more time with my family and seeing God's beautiful world. So I've enjoyed serving with each one of you gentlemen. I harbor no ill feelings or resentment. I always felt it was my duty to represent the feelings of the constituents that elected me. And if I upset anyone along the way, I sincerely apologize tonight, but I meant what I said. I'm looking forward to retirement. Thank each and every one of you.
And I would add that Elton Blackstock is a Navy veteran, so we appreciate his service to our country. If you want to take one photograph, we'll be up to the next.
Sam, can you come to the middle? And, yeah, just next to him.
He won't just us all in easy.
Yes, okay.
No one is following us.
All right, everybody looking good, straight ahead. One, two, three.
You've got to say one thing, too. I always wondered what everybody was thinking when they kind of got their retirement plaque back then, say relief. Watched a bunch of them do it. You want to do this?
No, sir. I've done...
You're going to make me do it, right?
I've done enough for his amounts tonight, sir. Okay. Mr. Carter should have got him.
You did well.
It's really been hard and privileged to present this to you for all the hard service. I know the county staff appreciated your wealth of knowledge, and you're going to be hard to replace, and I know they're going to miss you a whole lot as far as getting a big, big job done. I'll go ahead and read this. This plaque is presented to Shirley Y. Hammack in recognition of four years of outstanding dedication and service to the citizens of Pennsylvania County as Commissioner of Revenue, January 2016 to December 2019, presented by the Board of Supervisors of Pennsylvania County, Virginia. Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say, Madam Z?
Well, I only served as Commissioner of Revenue for four years, but I gave over half my life in service to the county. Thirty-four years started back in 1985, so I know there are a lot of changes, but we've got a long way still to go. But I appreciate everything. I appreciate the boards I've worked with and the county officials, they've been very helpful, and I hope I have contributed something to them. Thank you.
Hey, David. All right, here we go. One, two, three.
Is Ron, Ron?
He's not here. I came to speak in public.
Ron, the man's not here today. His wife Diane is here. I'll go ahead and present this to her, and... Make sure it gets a good picture. This is a certificate of appreciation from the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expressing sincere appreciation and admiration for your commitment and service to the county during your 12 years of service on the IDA of all the state's representative. I see that's from the Development Authority Board. It is citizens like you who were tirelessly for the betterment of all in our county. We wish you best in your future endeavors, and thank you again for your years of service.
Mr. Sides. Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, this is a certificate of appreciation, expresses its sincere appreciation and admiration for your commitment and service to the county during your 22 years of employment. You have tirelessly given your time and effort for the betterment of the county, and your hard work and dedication is not forgotten on notice. You will be greatly missed, and we wish you all the best on your retirement, Mr. Sides, given the 17th day of December, 2019, Jovey Davis as the Chairman. Mr. Sides is a pilot, so I'm going to give him one statement, and he knows exactly what I'm talking about. Remember to always step on the bubble, is that correct?
Step on the bubble, yeah.
Do you have anything you would like to say?
Well, I guess it's amazing how time flies. Twenty-two years ago, I can remember when I was the new guy, and then all of a sudden, you're the old guy. I don't know how that happened so quickly, but like Shirley says, altogether, I've done 33 years of government service. Always felt like, in government service, you worked for the citizens, and there's no higher calling than that, so I've enjoyed it, and I appreciate everyone you guys have done.
I'll come a little closer. All right, here we go. One, two, three.
Thank you, Ray. Our next presenter is one from the city of Danville, Mr. Fred O. Shanks. Mr. Shanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. It's my pleasure to be here this evening for several reasons. I'm not in Danville this evening, as there is a meeting going on there as well. But the main reason I'm here is on behalf of being the Chairman of the Danville, Pennsylvania County Regional Industrial Facilities Authority. I've served currently with Bob Warren, Elton Blackstock, and Ron Scares. Before I get on, I'd like to say, I'm very proud to be a member of the RIFA Board. We have had many successes in the past, and we certainly have a few opportunities that could be big successes for the future. So I'm proud to have been part of that Board, and I just wanted to say that the state of Virginia recognizes the cooperation, the regional cooperation by the Pennsylvania County and the city of Danville in this endeavor, this Regional Industrial Facilities Authority. They actually hold us up in front of many other areas in the state of Virginia. So I'm proud to have been a member of the Board of Supervisors. But tonight, it's about Elton Blackstock. I wanted to come and, on behalf of RIFA, and acknowledge Elton's experience, acknowledge our appreciation and gratitude for all the service that Elton has provided. So tonight, I have a plaque for Elton, presented to Elton W. Blackstock for four years of distinguished service, as a member of the Board of the Danville, Pennsylvania Regional Industrial Facility Authority, December 17th, 2019. And before I conclude, I'd like to take an opportunity for another appreciation. I'll just say this, I've worked on the RIFA Board for 12 years now. I've served with Bob Warren and Ron Scares. I've served with Mr. Barber, served with Mr. Barksdale, Mr. Snead, Mr. Haggerman, and Mr. Harville. It's been a pleasure working with Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. That's how long another individual... That's how long another individual has been on the staff with the RIFA board. Actually, he's been on the staff for seventeen years. Greg Sides, we do want to show our appreciation, but let me just say this before. Greg really is a public service and has been a servant. I have dealt with Greg in private practice and professional city practice, and I am just couldn't say more good things about an individual than Greg Sides. He's been just a wonderful asset to our community and to the RIFA board. Presented to Greg Sides for seventeen years of service and outstanding contributions to the Danville, Pennsylvania Regional Industrial Facility Authority, given this December seventeen, two thousand nineteen, on behalf of the RIFA board. Mr. Chairman, before I leave, I'd just like to say thank you for, Mr. Barber, it's been a pleasure working with you over the years, and wish you a good retirement, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that's the first time Danville's ever been down here, up here in this area, isn't it? Thank you. Moving on to the hearing of the citizens. Each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of forty-five minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting, absent chairman's approval. No person shall be able to speak who is not signed up.
And we have Diane McMahon signed up to speak.
Good evening. My name is Diane McMahon, and I'm in the Westover District. And I spoke with Chairman Davis just recently about a project that I'm involved with, and he asked that I come and speak to you about it. So, I'm here to talk to you about a project that's really near and dear to my heart. Just in early November, I received a phone call from Joyce French, who works for Dewberry in Danville. She's the grant writer that's working on the water project that's the water being run from Eden to the mega park. And she contacted me when she heard through a mutual friend that I had an uncle that had died in the Battle of the Bulge, and she said she was doing a veterans' dinner at Danville Golf Club and would I please attend and represent for the missing man ceremony. And I thought I'd be glad to do that, that anything to do with veterans and especially that was very close to my heart. So, she explained the project to me. She said her brother is a three-star retired general. He lives in Williamsburg now. He's originally from the Chase City area, and he's on the board down in Richmond of the Veterans Memorial. And he's on that board, and he, there's recently been a project that they're doing called Walk of Honor to honor veterans down there at the Veterans Memorial. And he said he felt like that Southside veterans should be honored, and so she had an event down in South Hill, another event down in Halifax, and then she had this event in Danville right after Veterans Day. And she's raising money in order for us to have a plaque down there to honor the Southside veterans. The total cost of the project is a hundred thousand dollars. She got a friend of hers, Ted Daniel, who was the former manager of South Boston, to help her out, and she's raised over seventy thousand dollars. So, now she's looking to the county to see if they will contribute, just like South Hill contributed, the town of Halifax, and Halifax County. So, I'm here tonight to ask if you, would you please support this worthy project? And the ceremony will be held for this event will be tentatively February the twenty-ninth. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. McMahon.
We don't have anyone else signed up to speak.
Any others? Thank you. Moving on to item A, rezoning public hearings. Pursuant to Article Five, Division Six of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, the Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, comprehensive plan, and the best interests of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Public hearing, rezoning case R-19-033. I open this public hearing up at seven thirty-three P.M. Mr. Sides.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case R-19-033, Brenda Reagan and Mark Stevens have petitioned to rezone point zero-two-eighths of an acre from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District and zero-point-zero-six-two acres from A-1 Agricultural District to R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District, to combine with adjacent parcels that are zoned respectively A-1 and R-1. And if you notice in your packet, this is basically just a property swap to straighten out property lines. The parcels are located on U.S. Highway three sixty in the Dan River Election District. The planning commission recommended by unanimous vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the properties are rezoned to A-1 and R-1, then all uses listed under their respective sections are permitted. Staff Summers enclosing your board packet, and Mr. Chairman Brandy Reagan and Mark Stevens are here to represent the petition.
Mr. Reagan, you have anything you'd like to say? Or add? Okay. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, we have no one signed up to speak, so you may close the public
I close this public hearing at seven thirty-seven P.M. Being familiar with it and no opposition. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the rezoning for case number R-19-033 as presented.
Have a motion by Mr. Warren. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Scares. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
That carries unanimously. Mr. Reagan, your property has been rezoned. Moving on to case R-19-034. I open this public hearing up at seven forty P.M. Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Case R-19-034, John and Mona Lewis have petitioned to rezone zero-point-three-two of an acre located on State Road six fifty-five, Tom Fork Road, in the Dan River Election District from B-two Business District to RC-one Residential Combined Subdivision District, to allow for placement of a single-wide mobile home on the property. The planning commission recommended by unanimous vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to RC-one, then all uses listed under section thirty-five dash two sixty-seven are permitted. Staff Summers enclosing the board packet, and Mr. Chairman Danny Lewis is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, we have no one signed up to speak for this case, so you may close the public hearing.
I close this public hearing at seven forty-one P.M. Thank you. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the rezoning of case number R-19-034 as presented by staff.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Warren and a second by Dr. Miller. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none?
Let's get this second. All right, please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Lewis, your property's been rezoned, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You can stay, or are you at liberty to leave? Thank you.
We have no other public hearings, so you can, and we have no unfinished business, and we have no new business, so you can move to section thirteen.
Okay, so that's the appointment ratification, T-LAC's election of the Leesville Lake Association representative. Okay, Ms. McCluster.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The T-LAC appointments are for a one-year term, beginning in January the first of two thousand twenty. They recently re-elected Dave Reeves to a new term as its Leesville Lake Association representative and appointed him as its new president for the two thousand twenty year. You do have a copy of their meeting minutes that are in the packet, and county staff recommends the board ratify their appointment of Mr. Reeves to serve as its Leesville Lake Association representative for a one-year term beginning on January first.
Thank you for a good job. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to ratify T-LAC's appointment of Mr. Reeves as its Leesville Lake Association representative for a one-year term beginning on January one of two thousand twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Motion by Mr. Farmer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barber. We have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
That carries unanimously. Ms. McCluster, Tri-County Lake Administrative Commission, once again, appointment.
We just finished that one. We're going to do Matters from Work session.
Okay.
These were the ones that were added.
Well, let this one come up again on this one for me. Okay.
Reset it. All right, try now.
Okay.
Did it reboot? Can y'all see the updated version? Okay.
That's what I was looking for. I don't see it. That's what I was looking for.
It's just nothing attached.
Okay, we're at fourteen A, which is the approval of the two thousand twenty legislative priority list that was discussed in the work session earlier.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty legislative priority list as presented in the work session.
I did add the section about Laurel Ruston on there, just heard Mr. Farmer's press.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Barber and one second by Mr. Farmer. We have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Counselor, where were we at all there?
We're at fourteen B. If you look at that screen.
Yeah.
It's approval of authorization for a public hearing on revisions to Pennsylvania County.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion by any of the board members on this?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the authorization of a public hearing for revisions to be made as presented by staff.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scares. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
That carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Fire and Rescue Commission.
Mr. Chairman, if I may jump in, I believe at the Legislative Committee, the recommendation was to just refer this to a future finance committee so we can work out potential funding for the stipend, or maybe discuss whether or not the stipend is justified. So, staff's recommended for the board to make a motion to refer this matter to a future finance committee, meaning for further discussion.
Okay, so that was said. We need a motion to carry it to a future discussion. Do I have a motion for that? Is that good enough, Counselor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Scares makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Warren. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Approval of Silver Creek.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set up a public hearing to make Silver Creek a no-through-truck designated area.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Scares, one, a second by Mr. Farmer. Thank you. Have any further discussion by any board members? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
That carries unanimously. Okay, board member reports. Mr. Barber.
Yes, sir. I guess this will be the last time I address the county from sitting in this seat, but again, I just want to say that it's been an honor and a pleasure. I mean, people have asked me, how can I have any regrets? I've got sixteen years, a little guy from Roswell, to be a part of what I've been a part of, and when I reflect back on the sixteen years I've been over here, to me, it's amazing what we've done, where we've come from, and I know a lot of good things ahead in the county. Some of the highlights, I was thinking about, I guess the prayer issue was probably the one that I remember the most. I've never seen the county come together on an issue like that one, and I was proud to stand up for our rights, as we just did with the gun thing. And as I said, a little guy from Roswell spoke to thousands and hundreds of thousands and got on national TV and millions. I never thought I'd ever see that happen, but that's how God used me, and when this election come, I prayed right before it, I sat in my deer stand and prayed. I said, you know, God, I know you opened this door for me, and if you want to keep it open, I'll continue to serve. You want to shut it, shut. Anyway, it shut. So, when the election come out for a couple hours, you know, everybody, of course, can be like, what happened? But then the peace come on, I never had, and I realized my whole life, God's guided my life, and since the election, I've had many opportunities presented to me, I've had some boards offer to me, and our business is up nineteen percent. We just heard it from the county today. I mean, I've been blessed, and I know I'm not smart enough to do what I've done in life. I've been blessed beyond my measure. But anyway, I just want everybody to know I did my very best on this board. You know, sometimes we don't always agree, but we're not supposed to. We're a board, we're supposed to come over here, as Elton said, and represent a district, but it has been an honor, and I have done the best I could do with this job, and I pray for wisdom all the time to make the right decisions. And Mr. Ingram, I offered him, if he needs any help, I'd be happy to help, and I know the pros and cons of his job. It's a big undertaking, and that's why I say it's a hard job, and anybody that's ever sat on his seat knows that. But anyway, I want to thank everybody for all these years of supporting me, and I've enjoyed it.
Thank you. Mr. Blackstock?
I'd just like to echo what I said earlier. It's been quite an honor to serve the citizens of Pennsylvania County in a capacity as a standriver representative on this board. I admire anybody that's in public service today. Nobody knows with the technology that's available, people can reach you anytime that they get worked up through a cell phone, through social media, through the old way of telephones, faxes, you're pretty much on call twenty-four hours a day. And it's, I thought when I left my position of managing multiple jails, that my telephone would quit ringing, and I didn't realize when I took this position that it just began to ring. But it's been an honor to serve the county, my mother, my mother's family, my father's family, and my wife's family have been here for generations. And so, I hope that my children and grandchildren, if they choose to, would remain here in the county for the future, and I wanted to do a small part in making this a better county. And so, I... And so, I feel like I have contributed. I wish everybody good luck. Mr. Smitherman and his staff for the county, you do a tremendous job. My fellow board members, it's been an honor serving with you. We didn't always agree, but that's like Mr. Barber said earlier, that's part of serving on board. I feel like that I spoke up for the citizens I represented and I look forward to retirement. I think Dennis Carter's left a little while ago, but I've kind of been retired, semi-retired, I thought, seven years ago. But I'm really looking forward to a full retirement. I hope Dennis don't do like I did, get involved in too much. But it's a lot of, I'm looking forward to retirement. I wish nothing but the best for the county. You got a lot of, you got a lot of big decisions to make. And I pray that God will give you the wisdom and bless you with the knowledge to make those decisions and make this place, make Pennsylvania County, which I think is a wonderful place to live in now, an even better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Farmer?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I thought it was refreshing to see Mr. Shanks here from the Sea of Danville. So, I made a note here. Earlier last week, it was announced that, you know, the city's going to lose their economic developer, Telly Tucker. I just wanted to publicly, you know, thank his work. I know he doesn't directly affect, but he does indirectly affect the vision of this and the success of our county. I just wanted to thank him for all of his hard work. Also, Ms. Hammack, I've enjoyed getting to know her for the past two years that I've served. And she's always been tough but very fair. So, I wanted to also publicly thank her. Last week, we had a juvenile that was escaped custody and that actually happened 200 feet from my house. And I want to publicly thank Sheriff Taylor and all of his staff, law enforcement staffs that were there that made me and my family feel safe during that time while you had someone missing, or excuse me, being, being on the run. So, they did a great job handling it professionally and, like I said, made us feel safe. Mr. Barber, Mr. Blackstock, I've sat next to you all for the past two years. Just wanted to say thank you for getting me up to speed and making me feel welcome. It is a lot. It's a lot of information. And just coming up here for the, for the board meetings or just a drop in the bucket compared to the amount of work that's done behind the scenes. And both you all really made me feel welcome and gotten up to speed quickly. I want to thank you for that. Mr. Sides, you have a wealth of knowledge and something that I, you know, I do not specialize in is in the zoning and how to, you know, tell, because most people are coming to you and they have a problem or complaint. Very rarely do you get, you know, just a call of, how's it going? So, and I know I'm always one of those guys who's calling asking, can you help me with a situation? And you've always been there and I thank you. I'd like to wish all the citizens and staff and my fellow board members a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Dr. Miller?
Yes, sir. Just a few words. As has already been stated, we have had excellent workers here on the Board of Supervisors in terms of Mr. Barber, in terms of Mr. Blackstock. I appreciate the friendship that they have shown to me on my two years here on the board. Also, to Mr. Sides, I had the opportunity to meet him years ago. His sister worked with me in the schools many years ago. And she was a lovely person as well as, as he. And so, just want to say to our departing people, best wishes and thank you for the good work that you have done. And also, I think Mr. Ingram is here as he's coming on to the board. I've known him in other capacities back in the day. And we look forward to good relationships and cooperation with him as we go forward.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Mr. Scares?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I first just like to thank Tim and Elton. I think everyone on this board knows the commitment and sacrifices that they've made over the past, Tim, 16, and Elton, six years. And we truly appreciate that effort you gave for the county. I know both of you, your thoughts were for what was right for the county and I appreciated that. I think Elton's going to have the better end of the stick from listening to what your guys' plans are. He's going to be a snowbird and it sounds like Tim's going to work even harder. So, I think Elton's got the better end of that stick. But I also want to thank Greg for his hard work and the commitment to the county. He's been the mainstay for the go-to guy when we've had a problem or as far as in my district. And I appreciate all, all he's done for us. And of course, Shirley, again, I know the staff will miss her knowledge and I hope she's on speed dial, but I don't think she's going to do that either, is she, David? But anyway, I appreciate everyone's hard work, the staff, and wish them all a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. I want to thank the mayor of Chatham, Virginia for being here tonight, Mr. Fitzgerald, all of our staff, the IT department for doing a great job, Mr. Sides, Kalen, Kim, Colonel, Mr. Smitherman, Mr. Hunt, all the Board of Supervisors for doing a great job, J.D. Emerson, glad to see you here tonight, Mr. Angie, all of you, all of our law enforcement and even our news media. Thank you so kindly. Now, I have one thing to do. Mr. McCluster?
Do you mind if I have a comment?
Did I miss you? You don't mean nothing, no way. You, you, you have had more time to, Mr. Warren, thank you. I've said all I had to say. Good day. I do apologize.
And tonight, when we are losing two public servants from the board that have been dedicated to serving the citizens of Pennsylvania County, I think we also, we passed it under consent agenda, but I want everyone to remember that Roy Byrd, and what an outstanding public servant he was in many capacities. So, I was really happy to see the resolution tonight for Mr. Byrd. And hopefully, that'll carry through legislation and we'll get the bridge named after him. It's, it's very deserving. Also, Telly Tucker, I've called Telly and talked with him personally and wished him good luck. That's a, a big move for him and he seems really excited and I'm, I'm happy for it. I told him it was bittersweet because we were happy for him because he is a good man, but we were sad for the region because he's done a lot of great work here. Mr. Sides, gosh, steady, calm all the time. You know, if I'm going to be in a plane and we're going to have problems, I want to be with you because I know you're going to stay calm and cool. So, good luck in your retirement. I know you'll get to log a lot more miles in the air, so I know that'll make you very happy. Mr. Barber, you will be missed. I know on the board, you know, it's just hard, doesn't matter what anybody says, it's always hard to replace experience. So, I thank you for 16 years of service. And whenever I think about Mr. Barber, the one thing I think about first, and I've shared this with a lot of people over the last four years, Mr. Barber always is open and willing to share his faith, as was indicative by his comments tonight. And I really appreciate that about you, Tim, that you're out there and you don't mind anybody knowing that you're a Christian. And I, I truly appreciate that very much. Mr. Blackstock, I'm going to miss our times. Mr. Blackstock and I have probably been more passionate about some issues together over the last four years, but we were always, I feel like, respectful of one another. And we both are probably a little too similar. And that's why when we are passionate, we, we're going to say what we got to say. And I've always respected that about him. He, he wasn't wishy-washy and he didn't knock up about it. But I've also had a lot more opportunities that we agreed on projects and we agreed on things and we worked together on those projects. And Mr. Blackstock's been a valuable asset to this board in a lot of ways, from the financial aspect and from economic development. And serving with him on RIFA has been a, a real pleasure. People sometimes hear us talk about a particular issue that we don't agree with, but if you don't agree on, but if you look back, that's such a small percentage in the real number of things that we make decisions on here. And Mr. Blackstock has been a person, I've told him this personally, that really has pushed me to be better at this the last four years because you knew that you better be prepared because he was going to be prepared when he came to meetings. And Mr. Blackstock, I hope you and Sue have a great time in retirement. You've earned it. You deserve it. And, and, you know, I just hope that you'll do the right things and keep Mason happy. That's the most important thing. Don't let Mason be unhappy. So, with that being said, you know, I look forward to the opportunity for the new folks coming on the board. Mr. Ingram's here tonight. And we'll just do the best job we can. And I'm sure these two gentlemen, even though they're retiring, they'll, their abilities and insight, and I know they'll be willing to share and help us with their knowledge in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are you good, Mr. Chairman? I mean, Mr. Warren.
Yes, sir.
I want to present this very quickly to Mr. Kay McCluster for the wonderful job she does just coming from the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't have to do that.
Oh, I did? Oh, yeah. No, I got one.
Mr. Smitherman? Do you have anything that you would like to add?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of business items. One, I do want to remind our citizens that we're in the, excuse me, process of conducting a broadband availability study and survey. If you've not already participated in that, please reach out and participate in the online survey about your current internet availability as well as future needs. And there will be something, we'll put something up on our Facebook page tomorrow as well as our website to make sure that you can find a link to go participate in that survey. It's very important. I also want to say to the public that, oh, this isn't it? I got the wrong book. I thought I had a prop. We got our audit this evening. I'll put it this way. We've got our audit back this evening for fiscal year 2019. And we've done well. The county is, has turned a corner on its finances. We're putting money back in the bank now. We're in the black to $1.6 million. And I want to publicly state appreciation for Finance Director Kim Vanderhyde, our Board of Supervisors, and all of our employees for the dedication everyone has shown marching down this road, fiscal responsibility and sustainability. And we're headed in the right direction. I'm very optimistic about the county's finances, not to mention our general operations. It is a, you know, 2020 is going to be different for us. I will personally say that I'm excited about the new year and I hope, I hope the board is. I hope the new board members are and I hope our staff is. Lots of opportunities going ahead, but it is not without irony that we say goodbye to three people this evening, three people that I personally enjoy working with. I particularly want to say a word about Greg. We have an executive team. There are five of us, myself, Mr. Hunt, Ms. Vanderhyde, Colonel Hicks, and Greg. And all five of us are very unique, different individuals. And it's what makes our team work. And Greg filled a very, very important role in that team. Greg brought a very, unique is not the appropriate word because I can't understate Greg's intellect, Greg's insight, Greg's experience, and Greg's ability to see things that the four of us weren't seeing when we're having a conversation about the future of this county. And it's been extremely valuable. And I have begun thinking about how do we replace Greg in our group? And I don't know if we will. I don't know that we should even try. And I think, and we haven't talked about it as a group yet because Greg's not done it, at least till next week. But, you know, we'll see where that goes. But his unique perspective, extreme experience, and great insight, not only into local government work, but also into the fabric of Pennsylvania County, has been extremely valuable for me in my short tenure as the county administrator. And I wish Greg all the best.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Looking forward to 2020. Merry Christmas to everyone.
Yes, sir. Counselor?
Just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. This meeting's a little bittersweet for me. We're losing three people that I've worked with for almost 10 years. And I'll miss Mr. Blackstock, Mr. Barber. When I think of them, I think of men of integrity, men of vision, men of passion. I'll miss Mr. Barber's frantic phone calls where he talks about 300 words per minute, but we always got to where we need to go. I'll miss Elton's phone calls and sense of humor. And Greg, I will miss Greg as well. Greg hates the spotlight, so this is probably killing him. But over our 10 years, Greg was always like a big brother to me. He was a sounding board. He's Mr. Steady. He's Mr. Dependable. He would help me talk through some very difficult situations. He always gave very good advice. And I, and I do believe although the board made the tough decisions about economic development, a lot of our successes today and in the future were because of the legwork that Greg did on the ground to get us to where we need to go. We finally have the facilities where people will want to come here. And that wouldn't have happened without Greg's leadership and hard work. He will be missed. I'll miss going to lunch with him in about nine until the time he gets catfished with ketchup. I think there's going to be a lot of restaurants hurting in Pennsylvania County with his retirement. But I wish him all the best. I hope he gets to the Philippines. Hope he gets down to Florida. And I hope he flies as much as he wants to.
Thank you. I declare the meeting adjourned.